I'd like to call this meeting to order. The time is 6:00 P.M. Today is Monday, August the 12th, 2024. Mr. Hildebrand, will you please lead us in prayer?
I'll be glad to. Eternal heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for the blessings and deals of the day. Thank you for the time for us to assemble and take care of the people's business. Thank you for this assembly here. Bless all members, bless the men and women in attendance. Father, may we do your will and guided by your Holy Spirit. May you do so in a way that would be very pleasing unto you. Please bless this community and make we all be this unity in the name of Jesus' name, I pray.
Amen.
For those of you who don't know me, my name is Angel McCroskey. I'm your mayor pro tem. Mayor Land is not feeling well, so I'm gonna be filling in for him tonight. I ask that everyone please keep Mayor Land in your prayers. We have information for the council members from SRMPA and SETRPC. Are there any departmental reports? Susan. Susan with David Waxman is gonna give us a status report on the grant projects.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and Council. It's a pleasure for me to be here to give you an update on the quite a few grants that we have working with the city right now. The most exciting is that last Thursday, we were able to participate with members of the city council and city staff with a check presentation from the land commissioner for And that's on a mitigation grant that we came to you and applied for over two years ago, and the general land office has finally processed all of that and is allocating that money to the city. And that will be for two basic projects. That's a street improvements project, and that's along High Truitt Road and Temple Street area. And that's about nine, I think, nine hundred, little over $900,000 of that grant will go toward that project. And then there's a citywide improvement of sewer. Over 13,000 linear feet of sewer line will be rehabilitated, replaced, or relocated throughout the city. The general areas, Water Street, Peachtree, Willow, Martin Hancock College, and Cabin Streets are the general areas. I can provide you all with maps if you wanna see more specifics, but as we start to get into the grant, we'll have more discussion about those. And it's important for everyone to understand that when we talk about a certain area where a sewer line is, just because I say we're replacing a line on Willow Street, all of the sewer, first, second, third street over here north of Junior High, that all flows into that Willow sewer line. So if anybody has questions about exactly where those lines will be replaced, I'm more than happy to answer. And the city manager and the public works director, they all have the same information. But I think it's important that the citizens of Jasper understand, you know, how these projects are being used. So that is the grant, the new grant that is just now getting funded. We have three grants in progress. We have the sewer improvement grant that's through the Texas Department of Agriculture, and that is rehabilitation of sewer lines and manholes along Pearl Street and in the Walnut Run area. And that project is about 70% complete, and it is scheduled to be completed by the end of the year. The next one we have is the 2016 flood grant. That's Sandy Creek Drainage Improvements. That's the revetment walls and all the rock along Sandy Creek on the other side of 96 going north along the creek. That work is complete. We do have a balance of $192,000 in that grant, and we had had the engineer design farther up the creek to keep going with the rock improvements and so forth. So on your agenda this evening, you'll see a request for authorization to bid, and that is so that we can continue on and use all of that money and not reallocate it back to the state, but continue to use it up Sandy Creek. And the reason we could not just put it into the current contract is that the change orders that we had to do to make the improvements along the creek, we've reached the maximum amount allowed by law to change order into a contract, and so therefore we'll have to rebid that one. The mitigation grant for the streets, that's your $13 million grant. That one is streets throughout the city, as everyone has seen, no doubt. It is about 60% complete. We did finish the paving on Bulldog Avenue, and next week before, the first day of school, it will be striped. So with all of the rain delays that we've had, I want to commend everybody on the coordination of that effort over the summer to get that done, so that we aren't under construction when school starts. And that work will continue through, it'll probably be almost another year before we complete everything on that one. And those are the four grants that we currently have. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have now, or if you, you know, wanna email me or get back to me, I can give you more details.
Have any questions? Susan, do you? Susan, thank you so much. Thank you. Okay, now we have public comments. Please understand that the city council cannot take, cannot discuss any presented issue, nor can it take any action on any issue at this time, except that a statement of fact included policy may be made if responsive to an issue. A.G. opinion, J.C. 0169, Mr. Joseph Simons. You have three minutes, Mr. Simons.
Good evening, everybody, council members. I'd like to address an issue that's been ongoing and regular to me and a lot of people in my, in my industry. My name's Joseph Simons, I work in construction business. I know a lot, a lot of other people I spoke with in the community are having similar issues, and I'm gonna start off with a little story. I have a new couple that just moved into town. They've been here for about a month. They had a leak in their hot water here. They ended up going to City Hall right here to report the leak, and it comes up, they go to get the credit back. As soon as they leave, the code enforcement officer follows them back to their house and does an inspection. They weren't invited there. It's not warranted, but yet we have that issue. Just to further this, today, they had a fire alarm in the morning with a carbon monoxide going on as well. The fire marshal responded to this, and as soon as the fire marshal responded, about two minutes later, the code enforcement officer shows up and insists he has to go inside the home. Why do we need that? Why does the code enforcement officer have to go in? Does he have a gas meter? Is there anything that he can do that the fire marshal didn't already clarify? I've pulled a handful of permits, and I can tell you, five times, I've had the code enforcement enter into homes they're not supposed to. And I'm gonna add the icing on the cake here. This lady is just recovering from a heart attack. She just had triple bypass heart surgery, and she's dealing with this. What we've got going on here is not structured, and we, we simply cannot handle this. We don't have the infrastructure. We don't have a city engineer. Do we have a planning committee? Do we have a zoning committee? We have none of these people that support our code enforcement office, but yet, we're making changes to engineer plans. We're holding up businesses and preventing businesses and contractors from doing business here in the city. Why is that? I'm gonna tell you, whenever I go into a pull a permit, every single time, they ask me where it's at, who the home runner is for them, and that's it. They don't ask me how much the job is. They don't ask me if I have insurance. Why am I paying a permitting fee if they're not vetting me as a contractor? As a city, what is that saying to the people that we're paying this salary for? Why are we paying this if we're not vetting the contractors and anybody coming in? Anybody can pull a permit. Anybody can do the work, and as long as you pay the permitting fee, hey, it's good. We don't have a roofing inspector. Do we have a master plumber? Do we have a master electrician? Does anybody have a TDLR license to be an inspector?
Thank you, Mr. Simons. Your three minutes is up. Thank you so much.
Appreciate you.
Our next comment is by Mr. Bo Lember. You have three minutes, Mr. Lember.
Yes, ma'am. I'll make it short, too. First and foremost, give an honorable praise to my Lord Jesus Christ, to all the councilmen, first of all, councilwoman, and men, to the city of Jasper. I make my short, simple, sweet. All I wanna do is help the city. I love my city. I quit college for this city. I went to U.S.C. full scholarship. John A. Lember is my grandfather. Quit college, came here, fell in love with my grandfather, stayed here four years, went to California, became an engineer 32 years, made more money than the President of the United States. All I wanna do is spend $4 million here to build this city. Bowling, skateboarding, boxing gym, computer lab, name it. I just wanna give. I love Jasper. I don't think it's too many people here love it more than I do. I pick up trash. I give unconditionally. I love unconditionally. I'm a Christian. I had a long week. Don't have much to say. I drove from Jasper to California 100 miles an hour to go save my nephew from committing suicide. My mother has cancer, and my best friend, I buried him Saturday. He was the quarterback, I was the running back. I was supposed to be here. My cousin died at a funeral. I love Jasper. Say what you wanna say, throw stones, I expect it all. All I wanna say is I love. No one here has ever seen me do anything wrong.
Thank you, Mr. Lember.
Mr. Lember?
Yes, sir.
I may take you to task on how much you love Jasper compared to how much I love Jasper. So we can meet outside when it's all over.
Next, for public comments, we have Mr. King Scott. Three minutes, Mr. Scott.
The mayor pro tem, and also, Mr. Bo, which is the councilmen and women, have a few questions I'd like to propose. Do you have any concerns with the frequent power loss on the east quarter of Highway 190? Several Jasper senior citizens that happen to live on this side are all on oxygen. They have expressed concern. So when wind and rainstorm seems to cause that side to agree to fail, oftentimes we were out without electricity. Now, I know that the average equipment that's used here in the city seem to be up to par, and salaries here seem to be fairly competitive. So what is the action plan going forward to fix this problem? And what is the plan for bringing in new businesses to help grow this city? Population has been declining. When I left here, it was almost 9, 10,000, and it's about 6,000 or something now. Population is on the decline, thus causing the school population, the school district to decline. So what is the plan for attracting technical and medical talent slash jobs and improving the medical system here in Jasper? I drive all the way to Houston to the Texas Medical Center, most of the time to get medical assistance, which is two and a half hours away. Homeless and mental health issues seem to be on the rise here in Jasper. When I left here years ago, I never saw anyone homeless, but I see it every day, and I see illness on the streets every day. And what is the plan for making a positive impact on both of those areas? We have people that need help here in the city that are citizens. And all parliamentarian procedures require council meetings, and does the current meeting cadence align with the basic principles of parliamentarian governance? Several major issues I noted, and citizens are counting on his leadership to help to make the right decisions. Lastly, all of you of servants, employees of Jasper who get paid, that includes the police, everyone here, and also the council members, and the mayor of Jasper. And so if you had to rate yourselves, and don't answer this question, if you had to rate yourselves today, what grade would you give? Citizens of Jasper are counting on you to make the right decisions to improve this city, what their problems and what improvements need to be made. And with that, mayor pro tem, I can give a vote back to you. I have copies of what I've read, and I'll give that to the city secretary. Okay?
Thank you so much, Mr. Scott. Okay, items up for discussion and/or action. Item number one, consider for approval, two sets of minutes, regular called city council meeting minutes from July 8th, 2024, and also special called city council meeting minutes from July 15th, 2024. We have a motion by Councilwoman Sample. And a second by Mr. Barber. All in favor? Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Item number two, consider for approval, authorization to begin procurement for Texas Department of Agriculture, CDBG funding for the 25, 26, 2025 to 2026. Do I have a motion?
So move. I see.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Hildebrand, seconded by Councilwoman Holmes. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number three, consider for approval, authorization to bid the final portion of Sandy Creek Drainage Improvements Project under the GLO grant 19076047B700. Do I have a motion? Motion by Councilwoman Sample. Seconded by Councilwoman Holmes. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Consider for approval, discuss and vote on committee's recommendation for grant administrator for the Resilient Communities Program Grant. Do I have a motion? We have a motion by Councilwoman Holmes and seconded by Councilwoman Barber. I'm sorry, is there any discussion? Oh, is it by Mr. Sample? Okay. Sorry, seconded by Councilwoman Sample. I'm sorry I didn't allow for discussion on these other items. Is there any discussion on item number four? No discussion? Okay. So we'll have a vote. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number five, consider for approval, variance request for 410, Third Street. Do I have a motion? Okay, so we have a motion by Councilwoman Hildebrand and seconded by Councilwoman Holmes. Do we have any discussion, Mr. Sample?
What's, what would be the question there in clarification on the measurements?
It's gotta put porch in this house.
Yes, sir. She's, she is currently remodeling that entire structure. She's got a little permit. She wanted to have a porch on. Unfortunately, when that house was built a long time ago, that accountability setback in front was not cleared in that, that door to be placed so close to the street. So consulting with the Streets Department, Public Works, everything that she needs to come out that far for that porch, which is a 37-foot, was being out of the utility right-of-way altogether. As long as she stayed out of that utility right-of-way, that public porch, Public Works was okay, it would be a great porch for this variance to bring it to you. So that's what we're gonna do.
Any other questions for Mr. Chestnut?
Is that the only variance to that property?
Yes, sir. That's the only one. The rest of it, she is permitted by code, and she is in the area. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chestnut. All right, are we ready to vote? Do I have a motion?
Yeah.
And a second, that's right. Okay, I'm sorry, all in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number six, consider for approval, invoice from I-14 Gulf Coast Strategic Highway Coalition for annual membership dues, $1,250. Do we have a motion? I have a motion by Councilwoman Sample.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Hildebrand. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir, Mr. Sample.
Senator Kelly, is this to do with the, what I'm trying to ask? This intersect?
Yeah, parts of the, parts are waiting out in the clean area, parts of it are being completed. So yes, and this is a coalition of groups of cities and counties to pay the dues to help get the process done. Mark Allen is our area representative on this committee, so it's a case we can plan for several years. Yes, it's part of it has been completed. Thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Kelly. All those in favor? Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Item number seven, we're gonna remove, we're gonna stretch that from the agenda. Item number eight, consider for approval, study and analyze the use of an official City of Jasper message board for use by the mayor, city council members, and city staff only. Message boards are an avenue for all appropriate city representatives to share comments and thoughts, but are available for public viewing. Do we have a motion? All right, so I have a motion by Councilwoman Hildebrand, seconded by Councilwoman Sample. Do we have any discussion?
That's a great question. Okay. I'll tell you what it is. It's like, it's like a secure social media platform that's exclusive to the city of Jasper, and it allows any of us, all five of us, could get on there and start a discussion thread about anything we want, and it's not subject to the open evening. I've said before, sitting right here, there are times we need to be able to share some discussion, instead of just coming in here on Monday evening and delving into something and everyone expecting us to make intelligent decisions. So it would be, it could be used by the city administrative staff, it could be used by us, by the mayor. The public can view it, they just can't post or comment on it. And, and this proposal is just to study and analyze. It's not asking for money, I'm not saying we're gonna do it. I like the idea of it, and it might be something that, once we all think about it, it's just not worth the dollar, but a lot of cities and towns are now using this.
I would also like to say that a lot of cities are using these message boards, and this is great to keep the public informed about what's going on with us, and all of us be able to talk at the same time, like Councilwoman Hildebrand said, without creating a forum. And so it's really good to keep the public aware of everything that we're doing here. We want full transparency, you know, in my opinion, here on the council. Absolutely, I'm sure all of you all agree. Absolutely. Anything else? Any other comments? Okay. All those in favor? Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Item number nine, consider for approval, and items be placed on every agenda prior to adjournment for open discussion for council members.
So move. I see.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Hildebrand and a second by Councilwoman Holmes. Do we have any discussion?
I would like to say this. As noted on the, well, I don't know what version of the agenda everyone has. I got the very first, has everyone's name on it. I did submit this request, simply because I know that typically, other governing bodies and their formal meeting agendas have that opportunity for the five of us to speak of anything before a formal meeting is adjourned, including a public request of future agenda items, discussion items, it doesn't matter. Anyway, so I did, I did some homework, and I was at a T M L conference just two and a half weeks ago, visited with probably a couple hundred different council members from across the state, and way more than half offer that opportunity on their monthly regular meeting as an open night for discussion.
Anything else? Any other comments? No other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number 10, consider for approval, no names to be included on any agenda item unless requested, approved, or permitted by the person to be named. Do I have a motion? Okay, I have a motion by Councilwoman Holmes and a second by Councilwoman Barber. Any discussion? Councilwoman Hildebrand.
So here's my take on this, and here's why I requested this item, one of mine, as well again. Names on agendas are generally specific to ongoing projects, to specific departments, to specific funding measures, such as an agenda, I mean, a grant, whether it's state or federal. Those have formal official presenters. When you have a presenter, then you name the person by name. As far as agenda action items go, they've never been named. I have governed or sat at a table of a formal governing body for 35 years across the state of Texas, have never seen this. And my concern is this, number one, it's not typical. I think it adds absolutely nothing to the value of the agenda item that we're discussing I think it's gonna cause some reservations by some council members to even think about including an agenda item, and that's what we're here for, is to be able to put our matters on the table in front of the public and discuss those openly. So that in a nutshell, I'm gonna stop there and just give back.
Thank you so much. Is there any other comments about this item?
I agree with you.
I agree as well. I don't believe it's necessary. I don't believe it adds any value, and so I don't think that we should, should place names beside agenda items. It's, it's not helpful. I don't believe that, I know myself, I don't need credit for anything by putting my name on that, when I feel like we're all doing this together as a team, right, as a council. So I think it causes division, and I wanna avoid that, so I'm against it for that reason as well.
Any other comments? All right. All those in favor? Any opposed? Item passes. Item number 11, consider for approval, discuss and vote for an agreement for the City of Jasper to give Scott Street back to the Scott family, and the Scott family would give easements for all utilities to the city. Do I have a motion? I have a motion by Councilwoman Holmes. And a second by Councilwoman Barber. Is there any discussion about this?
I would like to add this. I'm not going to amend the motion, but I won't thug this out as a talk. out as a talking point. And I, I discussed this just moments ago with Mr. Holmes, and he's, he's permissible, or he has allowed me so generously to make this comment, to just make sure that whatever rights the city has to all of the utilities, the pertinences, including the right to go in and maintain, replace, service, anything regarding any of those utilities that are now existing out there on the ground, under the street, through the street, along the street, we got, we have to make sure that we have those rights protected for the sake of the city.
Anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Item passes unanimously. Item number twelve, consider for approval, authorize the interim city manager to go out for proposals for a forensic audit firm to be opened and chosen by the city council.
I have a motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Sample, and a second by Councilman Holmes. Is there any discussion? Mr. Over there?
No, not this time.
All right, then we're ready to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? None opposed? Item passes. The time now is six-thirty-one. We're gonna go into closed executive session pursuant to the Texas Government Code, Chapter five-five-one, Section five-five-one-zero-seven-four, personnel matters, and if deemed appropriate, take action on the above stated matters. I'm sorry, if I could read these first and then read these. Liz gave me the one, and so it kinda, I'm sorry. So number one, the first item for closed executive session is pursuant to the Texas Government Code, five-five-one, Section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-four, personnel matters concerning the posting of the city manager position. And item number two for closed executive session is pursuant to the Texas Government Code, five-five-one, Section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-four, personnel matters, city attorney. So six-oh-one will now go into closed executive session. I'm sorry, six-thirty-one. I'm so sorry. Please forgive me.